Mr. Alvarez is having internet connection problem, so he's going to rejoin and Dr. Macalas will join us within five minutes.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and get started here at 5:30, so in about a minute, less than a minute, and then whenever they're able to join us. I just want to be respectful of everyone else's time. I understand that there's a lot of obligations we all have. So now it is 5:30, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District February 3rd Special Board Meeting. I'm AESD Board President Mark Lopez, and this meeting is called to order at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted telephonically and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Board members and cabinet members will be video conferencing together to assist in managing the logistics of the meeting. For English, you may connect by phone as follows. Call 513-816-1035. When prompted, type in the PIN 420-822-164. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is also available to attendees. Para español, puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al 601 840 3104. Cuando se le pida, presione el PIN. 566 285 052 y el símbolo pound. A few reminders before we begin, please mute your microphone when you join the meeting, unmute when you are announced to speak. And finally, it's important to honor everyone's voice while we are speaking or while they are speaking, so please limit chats during presentations. Board members, tonight, all voting will be by roll call vote. When motioning or seconding an item, please state your name. For items, for any items being discussed, please state your name before discussing the item. Thank you. Let's begin with the flag salute. Dr. Downing, I trust you remember the words, so we will have you lead that, please.
Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Downing. We'll now move to item 1B, introductions and roll call. Dr. Paulo Magalis, board member. Still waiting, okay. Board member Ryan A. Relis.
Present.
Board member Juan G. Alvarez.
Sorry, present, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, board member Alvarez. Board clerk Philbeck.
Present.
Thank you. Board President Mark A. Lopez. We have with us Superintendent Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, Dr. Mary Grace.
Hi, everybody.
Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Dina Meland.
Good evening, everyone.
Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Jesse Chavaria.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations, Tracy Golden.
Good evening, everyone.
Senior Administrative Assistant, Iris Camacho.
Hello, everybody.
Our interpreters this evening are Mary Madrigal and Alina Avilar Roque.
Hello, everybody.
And finally, we have our Technology Support Technician, Janice Cato.
Good evening. Hello.
Good evening to all of you. Item 1C, adoption of agenda. Is there a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Relis.
Board member Relis moved by board member Relis.
Second, Philbeck.
Seconded by board member Philbeck. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. Paulo Magalis. Still not present. Board member Ryan Relis.
Aye.
Board member Juan Alvarez.
Aye.
Board clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes with all members present. We'll move on to item number two and let Dr. Magalis know we stalled as long as we could. Public speakers, speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. There are no public speakers tonight. Therefore, we'll move on to item number three, board discussion. Item 3A, governance training provided by the California School Boards Association, CSBA, GCS Consultant Sapita Yo. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me okay? Is the sound okay? All right. It is so nice to see all of you. I never thought, two years ago, when I had the pleasure of working with all of you, I never thought we would be meeting this way. I feel like this is the Brady Bunch, right? But I'm happy to be with you. Thank you so much for taking the time to take my calls and having conversations about this meeting. It's absolutely wonderful to work with all of you. Thank you, Superintendent Downing and Board President Lopez. Are we okay with this name tonight? Would you prefer to, for me to refer to you as board member or trustee with your last name? What's your preference? What do you feel more comfortable with?
I'm fine either way.
Okay. First name is okay with all of you?
I'm fine with my first name. That's, that's fine.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much. So I have prepared a short presentation for you. We have about just less than an hour and a half together. I have a PowerPoint to share with you. The format is I have the PowerPoint. I will show you a couple of slides. I have selected a few clips, movie clips to share with you, short videos. And so we'll see how technology will go tonight, but most of the time I like us to be in gallery view and I like us to share as much as you can and as comfortable as you are. If you can reflect and share and contribute, that's really the best way for these type of workshops to work. So let me go ahead and try to share. Let me see. Let's see if this works. Now you'll have to let me know when you see the right screen. I'm working from two monitors. So tell me what you can see in a moment. You should be able to see.
Yes, we can see it.
Which one, which screen can you see? My PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. So let me go now to presenter view and let's take a look and tell me now which screen can you see?
Your presentation.
With the notes or no notes?
No notes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I can't see you anymore and you'll have to unmute and let me know if you have any questions.
Actually, we can see your notes.
All right, so let me switch screens and now. You cannot see the note. Okay, perfect. Now I have it where I need it to be. All right. So again, thank you for the invitation to work with all of you. I am going to go over the agenda. This is what we have for this evening. I hope we can get to all of it. We're going to talk about leadership in times of crisis. That's something you have all been experiencing since the beginning of the pandemic. It's about, it's going to be a year soon. Leadership vision, why it's important to have a vision. We're going to discuss trust as foundation for effective governance. We're going to take a look and review roles and responsibilities of the board versus the superintendent. And we'll take a look at protocols, see if there are any new protocols you'd like to add to the list that you have. And then we'll end our session with a short video and, and a discussion on equity and inclusion. We'll have a very brief summary and a feedback form that I would like you to fill out and share with me at the end. So let's take a look at our virtual training norms. As you know, and I know that you have developed meeting guidelines and norms, in the past year or so, we have all had to pivot to a new way of managing board meetings and, and meetings in general and workshops. So with that, I know President Lopez went over the rules of our training or rules of virtual meetings, and so I don't think I need to share with you anything on that. Let's move on. I have a video I like us to begin with. When we're done, when I'm done with this video, I'm going to stop sharing and we're going to go in gallery view. And I would like to hear from all of you on this past year, perhaps a highlight for all of you, highlight of your district, something that you are proud of, that you managed in the pandemic. So let's go ahead and take a look.
The most human trait is to want to know why. And in a year that tested everyone around the world, why was searched more than ever?
The spread of the coronavirus has passed a significant milestone.
And while we didn't find all the answers, we kept asking. Some questions inspired joy, others excitement.
I don't know what an improper fraction is. Keep all of those distractions to happen. We found toilet tissue off.
No, no, I haven't started up one.
What do you have there? It's still hard. How many days in March?
Some questions made us cry. You know, we've been through our ups and been through our downs. I think the most important part is that we all stayed together throughout. I love you guys. Some made us worry about this spinning rock we call mine. Why were so many lives lost?
Almost 1.5 million people have now died of COVID-19 worldwide.
Why are we still asking the same questions?
George Floyd repeatedly told the officers that he could not breathe.
So why do we still have strength to continue?
I believe in your power. I believe in our power.
Hands of Black Lives Matter echoed from thousands of protesters in cities from around the world. Why are we not? We have made too much progress and we are not going back. We are going forward.
Planes are starting to arrive in Beijing, full of international planes. Firefighters from around the world arriving to help. There are a hundred current firefights in development worldwide.
This is one of those times when people look out for one another and have each other's backs. We kept going for those who showed us the way.
They could come here, have you look night, the world to be free and our daughter.
Remember the struggles along the way are only meant to shape you for your purpose. Press on with pride and press on with purpose. Why isn't that this you showed us your purpose and you still found ways to try?
An incredible feat, the way I got here.
The hips and the suckers, hope it's championship.
Can't let the Romans stop you and the Romans can't stop you.
So until we get to every answer. We're still searching.
All right. So I selected that video for you because we have had quite a year this past year and for folks in education especially. It's been a challenging year, a year of ups and downs, a year of managing, uh, a lot of changes and number of changes. And overnight you all had to pivot, manage, uh, your districts, govern your districts. And for all of your teachers and your staff to, um, overnight. Um, transfer all the curriculum to online learning for your students and, and for your, um, for your families. So it's, it's been quite a challenging year. What I like us to do, I like to open it up as we begin this workshop. And I know it can be challenging and it can be emotional to, um, think of the year that we have had. But it's important to also look back and look at what you have done. You're in education and all the changes you have managed, the transition you have managed to, um, to be able to continue to serve your students. All of your students. So please go ahead. You can unmute, you can share. I'm not going to call on you. Um, share as much or as little as you like reaction to the year in review. As well as highlights of this past year, uh, of serving your students and pivoting to this, uh, virtual. World that, that we're all operating from. You can go ahead and unmute and share when you're ready.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and start, um, just watch. I've seen that video once before. Um, but it, it's still very emotional every time you see it because of you, it reminds you of everything that's happened over the last, uh, several months and last year. Um, but, uh, I think despite all of those challenges, a lot of the successes that we've had is, um. What I've been doing recently is meeting with some of the school sites. And the one thing that I've consistently heard from our, our site admin and from a lot of our staff. Is that, uh, everybody really pulled together even more. Uh, it was already tight knit district. But everybody, uh, really came together even more because they wanted to be successful and they knew, uh, that we'd only achieve that success together. Whether it was getting technology out to our students, uh, meeting with, you know, the technology, the, the virtual meetings that we've been having, the classes. Um, we've still been able to, uh, get a lot of our, uh, a couple of our school sites are, are currently under construction. So that's still proceeding. I, I feel like that's an accomplishment as well that that's not, uh, an obstacle for us that we're in this pandemic. It's, it's not stopping us from the learning continuing and from the resources being available to our students and our families. And, uh, our superintendent who's gone above and beyond, uh, with town hall meetings, uh, reaching out to parents. Uh, reaching out to our families. Uh, we have, uh, you know, our testing sites, uh, that we've been coordinating with the community. Uh, so we've really had a pivot in a lot of those areas and a lot of ways getting, uh, food, uh, for, um, uh, our families. Because our schools are not just a place for learning, but it is a place for nutrition. It's a place for that, uh, social wellbeing, social emotional wellbeing. Uh, and I think that, uh, that's the thing that I've heard the most. Uh, as far as feedback and a reflection, I think I observed as well about our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
And to add to what the board president said, you know, it wasn't just our amazing staff that had to step up. But it was also our community partners, our community members, our community leaders. We had to learn to be resourceful. Uh, we had to share best practices, uh, and work with our outside communities. And, uh, you know, we have to give, it was just a time to work together. It was a very difficult year, I know, for all of us. And, um, it was about being resourceful with the resources we had, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Juan.
Uh, that was actually Palo who shared, uh, and I wanted to, and I just wanted to know that our immediate past president, uh, is, is here. I want to give him a shout out as well. And thank you for getting us through the, the bulk of that year. It was a challenging year and, and he really set the tone, set the bar for, uh, our virtual meetings that we have. So thank you, Dr. Macallus.
Thank you for sharing and thank you, uh, Mark for, for correcting me. I appreciate that. All right. Any other reactions, reflections? Jackie, I see that you have unmuted.
I was just gonna say what the other two said without repeating it, but what impressed me this year was. To go from a point where really literally a disaster was upon us. That had no script, that had nothing, that had preceded it, that at least would give us even an idea of what to do. And not only did our district, um. Hit the ground running with it, you know, getting the devices in every kid's hand, literally when we were shutting down. Dealing with the hotspots, um, simultaneously, you know, feeding families, the whole thing. I was really impressed by how our superintendent and cabinet and our employee partners. All came together to, I think. Put us. Ahead, way ahead. You know, we, we never fell behind. We were always either where we needed to be or. And I saw several examples, examples of where we were already planning ahead. Where there were already, I remember Dr. Downing already having the devices ordered in preparation for the ones that would be damaged or lost. Or, you know, we didn't wait for another setback. Everybody was thinking ahead. And so our, our cabinet and superintendent were phenomenal in that, but also our employees and our employee partners. Who worked hand in hand with us, literally like the district family that we are. And I think that's what brought us through. I heard from many other parents in other districts. That were calling me to see what we were doing because they were frustrated and we had already taken care of. The needs that they were experiencing at that time and we were already there. We'd already there, we'd done it. And we were prepping for the next set and the, the data has always been extremely forthcoming. Um, the communication has been great, not only with all of us involved on inside, but with our families and our parents. And so I guess I'm just saying that I was really, really impressed that going from something that none of us had ever anticipated, had no plan for. There is no drawings for, no script for. We just have done, we've been able to accomplish what we have. So, uh, I'm really proud of that. And kudos to all of the people that were behind it for all these months facilitating that.
Thanks for sharing, Jackie. It does take a village, doesn't it? To do anything in life and certainly to educate students takes a village. Ryan, I see that you have unmuted.
Yeah, you know, um, to just piggyback off what everybody else said, you know, um. I think the adjustment to distance learning was, uh, pretty smooth, um, and our district did a really good job with that. Um, the thing I really wanna just highlight is I think that, um, one key thing that our district is doing. That's just awesome is I really appreciate the communication that Chris gives out to the staff as well as the families. As well as keeping us in the loop with everything that's going out and it's frequent. It's not a, um. You know, a hit or miss kind of like, oh, I'm gonna send out a letter this week and, you know, I, I forgot. I got busy last week, you know, and I didn't send one, you know? I mean, it's very consistent and whatnot in our families. Um. When there isn't communication that's sent out, then we're seeing that as whoa, what's going on here, you know, because of the fact that they're used to that. Um, and that, that as a whole, I think is, it's, it's pretty powerful. Um, also, um, in this whole, you know, um. This, this whole pandemic overall and, and, and the state of uncertainty and, and, and in a lot of ways, just uneasy state of affairs. You know, I, I wanna just, uh, again, just to give, instead of just focusing on what's going on here in our district of Anaheim Elementary. Um, Chris continued to, um, expand and form partnerships with other stakeholders in the community. And really support one another, uh, with that. And, you know, I think that that's something that really in a lot of ways, um, permeates from our district. Um, as well as, you know, the, the high school district, um, that many of us work in. Um, but overall, just kind of in some ways, the city of Anaheim overall, I, I, I'm proud of our city. Um, I think our city overall did a really good job overall this summer, um, with lots of tumultuous things going on, you know? Um, the various, um, rallies and whatnot, which historically, I mean, we've had history here in Anaheim of like riots and things like that. Taking place, you know, and, and that's not what our community was about. And, 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 and I'm proud to say that a lot of our board members were out there because that's, you know, that's our community. I mean, the, the, a lot of them are constituents or students that we taught, our families that we work with, or, you know, people that we've seen and, and, and they were out there in support as well. And, um, you know, I, I, I just think it was all very positive overall and, 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 and really, um. In the path, uh, and, and going down the right direction. Um, and, and that was awesome. It was productive. You know, I feel that it was, it was a strong message and whatnot, but I really believe it's because of the fact that we have. Individuals like Downing and others who are making these connections and we're not operating in just this silo of isolation. So.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. In a few slides from now, you'll see on a slide leadership in times of crisis. And you'll see that everything that you have mentioned so far, those of you have shared, everything is on that. Um, slide on leadership, effective leadership in times of crisis. So thank you, Dr. Downing. And actually Juan, I see that you have both, um, unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think I just, I just wanted to take a step back and just say the actions of this board and this leadership team. We saved lives this year, this past year, right? We took, we took everything that was happening and we, we did the best we could with what we had. And we made the right decisions and as we went along, we were thinking about our families and their, their lives and we saved a ton. And you just had to, you just had to take that in, right? Us not returning and making those decisions, it literally kept people alive. So we should be proud of that. Um, and then also I want to give kudos to all the educators and the staff out there. We're, we're providing students learning opportunities regardless of the barriers that are being provided in or being placed in front of them, right? Um, the education community wants to start talking about learning loss. There's no learning loss. And I'm Elementary provided learning opportunities for students regardless of the situation. And we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the students that we're serving are being provided the best they can. And our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. Our aides are doing a phenomenal job. Our staffs who are working every day. At the school sites are doing a phenomenal job and it, it's like hero work, but no one's gonna ever call this. This district, uh, set of heroes, but that's where we really are. We save lives and we're teaching kids. So kudos to everybody. And it just, you mentioned something about what's, what are the things we're most proud of, the things I'm most proud of in the last year in 2020. Were a couple of resolutions, one where we, uh, stated that would, we would be providing culturally responsive curriculum to our students, uh, via some of our curriculum. And, uh, Black Lives Matters Resolution, right? I'm really proud of those. Um, in spite of all the madness that was going on around us, political, social, politically. We, 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 we're taking a stand and we say we are inclusive here and we care about everyone and we think everyone's important. And we want to make sure that everyone, everyone's fostered in their journey towards learning and we're not gonna leave anybody behind. And every child deserves to be treated equally. And, uh, that's, I think. And, and thinking back in this last school year, um, 2020, that's what I'm most proud of.
Thank you. Thanks, Juan. Dr. Downing, thank you for reading patiently.
No, of course. Um, I think what I'm proudest of is the strength and resiliency of our stakeholders. Um, every day, it's not easy for our students to log in and participate in distance learning. But 96% of them do, which is. Outstanding. Um. The hours that our teachers are putting in every day to plan and to deliver high quality instruction. It's. Unbelievable. Our staff members who despite Anaheim being, uh, considered a hotspot. Drive our kids that are participating in daycare to the school sites. Uh, clean our schools. Make sure our lawns represent. Our district. And just give of themselves to make sure that we are successful and continue to be amazing. This board. Um, just their willingness to meet, to engage, to ask questions. To expect the best for our district every single day. And our partners, the associations who meet with us, um, every week. Pretty much who help us identify where there's needs and to do our best to address them. Um, we call ourselves amazing AESD and. I probably say there's a reason for that, you know, the community of Anaheim has come together. Uh, to support, one of our board members said, we're not in isolation here. There's conversations taking place because everyone has the single focus to keep our stakeholders safe. And to do whatever we can do to make sure that our kids are learning and not suffering, but achieving despite this pandemic that's affecting the world. So just a great sense of pride for every person that supports our district every single day.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Um, when I visited your website and, and I often do this before workshops to become more familiar with the district. And see what you stand for and what's important to you. And the one, one of the screens was about kindness and that just touched my heart. And I thought it shows that there is a lot of not just hard work, but a lot of hard work with your, um. Anaheim Elementary family. And that's very evident in everything you do. Everything that you shared tonight is, is, is certainly, uh, representing that as well. Thank you all for sharing. And if the cabinet members, if you'd like to share, feel free to do so. I appreciate you taking the time to be here. It again, again, it goes back to your commitment to your stakeholders, to your students. And I have to tell you, if I ever have grandchildren, my children are grown now, they're adult, um, young adults. But if I ever have grandchildren, I want them to go to your school district for elementary education. Because to have this much kindness and hard work is just incredible. And that's what the world needs more of today. So let me go ahead. If there are no other questions or comments and I'm looking to make sure I'm not missing anyone, let me go ahead and share my screen again. You're going to continue. Feel free to unmute and ask questions. If there is no, um, you're not interrupting me. It's perfectly okay.
Um. Before we go on. Before we go on, if I could, although they they didn't speak, I just wanted to take a moment to to recognize the outstanding efforts of our cabinet members and other team members that are joining us this evening. When we talk about the the success of our district during this time, it's a reflection on them. I can remember during the summer when there were times when the data was just surging for COVID and you know, they're here giving of themselves, making sure that our district moves forward, so they don't often get the credit they deserve, but I just wanted to take a moment and recognize them.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. That's really important to do so and I appreciate that you take the time to to share that. All right, let me know if you can see my screen. You should be able to see it momentarily and you're seeing the right screen hopefully because I can no longer see you. Let's take a look at one of my absolute favorite quotes. And on one of your screens on your website, it said something about caring for all students or providing all resources to all students and that really captured my heart and I really, it really resonated with me. And I remembered and I I thought of this quote by Lillian Katz, the international leader in early childhood education. Take a look at it. I'd like you to read it. I'm not going to read it out. Take a moment to read it. And what I'd like you to do, if you had the opportunity to read the quote, I'd like you to take a look at the words or a sentence or sentences that really resonated with you. And go ahead and write that down for yourself. You're going to come back to it a bit later. But go ahead and write down what from Lillian Katz quote resonates with you as you think of your students in your district. And I like to begin the governance training with with this meaningful quote, reminding all of us of why we believe in and serve in public education, not that we need, not that you need reminder, but I really like to start the workshop with that. Governance is really a balancing act. If you think about it, you're always balancing so many different components. So this this particular visual helps us understand how an individual board member, I like to say governance team member, and the whole governance board consider and balance what sometimes are compelling interests. So take a look at that list and from everything that you shared at the beginning, it's evident to me that you have a good balance of serving each and every one of your children of having that common vision, common goal, having your not only district resources, but your community resources and being in touch with that, paying attention to the laws and regulations. You're in touch with your stakeholder interests and you're very connected. It seems like you're very connected as a governance team and modeling the the right responsible behavior and your personal beliefs and values that get you to serve on the governance team that inspire you to serve on the governance team. I like this visual because to me, when I look at it, when this whole pandemic is over and it will be over at some point, what remains is the people, your community, is your Anaheim Elementary family. Because the pandemic will be over. We don't know when, but it will. And so what do we do? And my question to you is, what have you been or what what have you done or currently doing for your Anaheim Elementary School District family? And and in particular, think of the crisis that that you're managing. What are some special features, special events, special programs that you have had to adopt as a as a result of this crisis? Take a look and 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 take a moment to write down your reflections on that. It's 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 really about learning from the past while looking forward to the future. Here's a quote on on crisis and the role of leaders. And everything again that you have shared is is very evident to me that that you're doing all of this, that that you have led your district, you're leading your district in the right manner during this current crisis. So leaders frame the meaning of a crisis event, expressing appropriate concern and support, overseeing mitigation, coordinating support and facilitating timely open communication. I I know that at least a couple of the board members did speak of the communication by your superintendent that's consistent, that's timely, that's often. And so there are no or or very few questions in the in the minds of your stakeholders because that communication that takes place. So responding to crisis and and again, I'm seeing that you are managing this crisis properly and following the steps. But the first one is getting quality and reliable facts. Right? When we on this March, I believe it was sixteen seventeen, when you had to pivot close schools and everyone thought it's just for a couple of weeks, but it ended up being a lot longer. Soon it'll be one year, as you know. Getting the facts and and communicating those facts was really critical. Implementing relevant contingency plan or quickly adapt adopt one to meet the crisis. That was level two. You had to think quickly. There was no time to to do a lot of reflection and thinking. You really had to make decisions overnight, what you were going to do, how you were going to pivot to virtual settings and online instructions. So making these decisions quickly before the level of damage escalates, that was, that is not the third level. Showing genuine concern for the welfare of others. Again, that's something that you do easily, not just show it, but you have actions to prove it. And and so and and again, communicating clearly, openly and regularly, which is something you already mentioned, to limit confusion, rumors and misinformation. One other step that that's really important in responding to crisis is to allow time to pause and reflect when you're done making the decisions you need to make, to figure out what you need to do differently. So once you decide on what needs to be done, what needed, what needed to be done immediately, it's about looking at what can you do in the future? What processes, protocols you need to put in place in the future to be able to manage future crises smoothly. Let's take a look at how culture, oh, let's take a look at key attributes of effective leaders. Again, you spoke, the board members spoke of Dr. Downing having these qualities and attributes. Dr. Downing spoke of all of you, the board members and cabinet members and staff, your whole family of Anaheim Elementary School District as effective leaders that have these attributes. Excellent communication skills, which is again, very critical, being able to make quick decisions, we talked about. Thinking creatively, you have all had to be very creative. Your teachers had to be very creative to figure out ways to to teach online classes and then and teach virtually and still keep your students engaged. Ninety-six, was it ninety-six percent of your students who log on? That's a high number. That's something to be very proud of. I hope I wrote that down right, but to be in the nineties, that is something to be very proud of. That speaks volumes of the creativity of your teachers. Showing empathy, which I don't think is is an issue with your particular governance team. Being flexible, being nimble, being optimistic, very important. And the ability to synthesize information, as you know, we're getting information on a daily basis, hourly basis, different type of information. And and to receive that information, synthesize it and use it to to move your district forward, to make the right decision, to to move, to make the right decisions and to look at the information that you're receiving as you plan for next steps and next crises that that could be around the corner for all of us. So on culture, the the importance of of and I wanted to really include this slide because as Peter Drucker says, culture eats strategy for breakfast, so you can have all the strategies in the world and the best strategies, but if the culture doesn't support it, they don't mean anything. Take a look at this quote that I have chosen for you. And that's really the role of the governance team because individually, as you know, as we have talked about role and responsibilities of the board members, individually, board members have no authority. Your authority and your power comes in when you're all together. And as the Japanese writer, who's regarded as the father of Japanese short stories, shares with us, individually, we are one drop, together, we are an ocean. So let me stop here and bring us back to gallery view to see if you have any reflections on Lillian Katz quote or any reflections this far, anything that comes to mind or any questions that you may have before we continue on and and move into vision and having a clear vision. Jackie, go ahead.
I'll just say what's stuck out to me on the quote because of who I am individually and it was the sentence with grandchildren in it, because I am a grandma now. And it was the, we must recognize that the welfare of our children and grandchildren is ultimately linked to the welfare of all other people's children. And I can say that forty years ago, I wasn't worried about the world and I really didn't have those fears for my children. But I have them for my grandchildren. And it hit home even more that how important it is that the welfare of, I've always felt that the welfare of all children is important always. And that is a part of pretty much everything I do is the welfare of children and has been for thirty, thirty-five years. But I can tell you that it also takes on a much deeper meaning and perspective when you get to the grandmother stage, when you get into that grandparent stage, it really does. It and I can't even explain necessarily why, I can just tell you that it just even becomes deeper, so that's what stuck out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jackie. Thanks for sharing. Anyone else? Any other reflections? Dr. Downing?
Well, I see board member Ruelis.
Dr. Downing, age before beauty. Go ahead.
Thank you. The good life for our own children can be secured only if a good life is also secured for all other people's children. That really resonated because it brings in what I I feel like this district stands for. We want an education for all that we would, the same that we would expect for our own kids. And that's it. And sometimes you don't see that in organizations. But it's here. There's just the highest of expectations that it, what we do for our children is the same that we would expect for our own.
Thank you. Ryan, go ahead.
So going that back to that quote about white governance, you know, the it it's interesting and I really like the quote overall, you know, I I really like kind of the this kind of, I don't know, I guess it would be juxtaposition in regards to the two sentences that mentioned and says, after all, when one of our children needs lifesaving surgery, someone else's child will perform it. If one of our children is threatened or harmed by violence, someone else's child will be responsible for that violent act. And that really resonated with me because of the fact that number one, as an educator, it's a good reminder because of the fact that we work with a wide array of different students, you know, with different histories, different backgrounds, different families, different upbringings. And this is something that our teachers think about on a daily basis. But the situation and it and whatnot, why it stuck out to me really, especially right now, it's just because of the fact that they had to do, think about this, but also distance learning and keeping things creative and, you know, figuring out ways to engage students when that child's life at home might not be awesome, you know? And just really trying their best to do that and really going above and beyond. And it just made me think that because I never really think about that sense. You're always just like, oh, somebody needs to control that kid, like what's going on, you know, but but what's happening at home with that kid that we're not seeing, you know? And it just served us like a a just a good reminder of you know, we we get to see the kids for a certain amount of time, but we don't really also get to see the entire picture of it and it's also what we don't see, that that's really in a lot of ways what has a large repercussion in regards to things. But if I may also just point out one thing that I was thinking about and and a few slides later, when you were talking about when the crisis fades, people will remain. And that's true. And 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 I try and view things as being an a a a major optimist about things, but when it's all said and done, with this pandemic and going to distance learning, some of the things that we did, which were awesome, that like I really think to myself, why, why don't we do that in in when we go back to classroom? And one things that I'm thinking about, of course, include the whole drive-by parades in your cars and things like that. Like, that was a sense of community and that got our community excited and people were outside and, you know, and and teachers were driving in their cars waving to their their students and things of that nature. And I thought that's, that's awesome, you know, that connection. And and we did that as a result of this situation. But but why do we have to stop? Like, what, I mean, wouldn't that be cool to like do that as like, that's a tradition like we're establishing now? Because the community, I mean, it it was a cool thing and 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 just to see the kids and whatnot out there with their signs to their teachers and to just see the excitement of the teachers getting everything ready for their students. I I just thought that was awesome. And and so I think that when it's said and done, yeah, I mean, this pandemic has been horrible and and whatnot and we've all adjusted. But some of the things that we've adjusted, I think that we should really capitalize and try and, you know, make a part of our culture because it's it's just good stuff, you know?
Thank you for sharing that. And you know, when you think of education and you reflect on education over the past, however, decades, it it's been broken and it's been broken for for a long time on so many levels and leaving a number of students out. And the conversations, the critical, crucial conversations that need to take place have not taken place. And the pandemic has really shown us that there are issues we need to talk about more openly, more transparently, that that there are lessons that we can learn from the pandemic, from the challenges of the pandemic as we move forward. If you recall, one of the lines was learning from, actually, that that's in your packets in the, I believe it's in the meeting guidelines. One of the samples, learning from the past while moving toward the future. And I know that you you have learned so much as you move forward toward your future to see which programs, which initiatives you want to continue having and celebrating even when we go back to in-person. So there's certainly a lot that we have learned and we continue to learn, but that is sign of effective leadership. You know, whatever situation you're in to be able to learn as you pivot and as you transition to the next, next crises or even next transition that could be hopefully being in person and being in the classrooms. Any other reflections? Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. It was, it was difficult to pick just one line of of this quote because I thought every part of it was equally important. But ultimately, I opted for the same line as a Dr. Downing. The good life for our own children can be secured only if a good life is also secured for all other people's children. And it it also reminded me of just something that you had said earlier this evening about it takes a village because it does take, everybody has to contribute and to do their part. We don't live or exist in a vacuum. All of our actions, no matter how insignificant we might think they are, are all going to have an impact. are all going to have an impact on other people at some level. And especially when we're working with families in, in our community here and young, young people are students. That's really the time of their life where it's the most formative and it's going to have the longest impact and the most significant impact on them as they're growing up and learning. And so our actions don't, aren't confined just to our own small circle. And I think just to have that self-awareness is helpful for me. And just as my colleague mentioned, Board Member Relus, about interacting with our students and not knowing what's going on outside of that, you know, thirty, forty, sixty-minute window of time that we might interact with, with the students is the fact that we may be their only positive adult interaction throughout the day. So it's, it's really a big, it's an honor, it's a big responsibility to think about how the things, the way that we interact with them will, will have an impact as well. So that's what I might take away from it.
Thank you. And the way you interact with each other, the behaviors that you, you show at the dais, even virtually during your meetings, all of those contribute to student learning and success. Because you're being watched, right? And, and leadership is, is being learned from how you are managing and how you're leading and how you're treating each other and how you're behaving. And that goes back to that self-awareness that you just mentioned. Any other reflections before I move on? I don't want to leave anyone behind.
Be a little critical seeped, great points, Board Members. It's just going from the slide based on John Oberg's quote, when the crisis fades, people will remain. Like, I, I, I get Oberg, it's like from a macro sense, right? Society will remain, people will remain. But, you know, we are a very caring, humanizing district and our approaches to things, we must also honor those who have passed because of this crisis. And then moving on to the slide in page three and times a crisis leaders express appropriate concern and support. It is so important that we provide them more than ever during these times. And I, I just had to say something with regards to that because I get it from a macro sense, people remain, but, you know, we must learn from these mistakes from a macro sense, maybe a federal sense. I, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. All right. So if there are no other reflections and comments, let's move on. And I love that you are, you're unmuting and sharing. I'd like to continue to do that. Let me go ahead and share my screen again as we move on. Okay. And you should be seeing my, my screen.
Yes.
Thank you for letting me know. I have a, a leadership vision, but I'm going to save it and see if we have time to watch this because I really want to, to move on to the next slide. So you may be familiar with Simon Sinek's Golden Circle, right? And in the video, and, and Simon Sinek has multiple videos on, on YouTube, on leadership, on trust, on teamwork. But this particular one is on the fact that we often don't reflect on our why, why we do what we do. I'd like you to write down on, on your, on your pad of paper, your why, why are you part of the governance team? Jackie spoke of her grandchildren or grandchild or children. And from the quote by Lily and Cats, that's what resonated with her. And, and, and all of you spoke of some reasons of why you do what you do. I'd like you to reflect on it. Write down for yourself your own why. Because as you know, often we are asked what we do, sometimes even how we do it. But you're not often asked why we do what we do. I'd like to show this next video. And it's one that I, I have selected for you. And it goes back to the basics of what, what's needed, right? What do students need? Your slide, your one slide or screen on your website really resonated with me on kindness, the importance of it, which goes back to the very basic human need that doesn't change when you're in bigger bodies, does not change when you're older. So let's go ahead and take a look.
Good morning. Good morning, Ashan. All right, class, settle down, settle down. Today's assignment is a little bit different to what we usually do. Today, I've got a question that I want you to answer. And the question is, what do you want to be when you grow up? Now, I want you to think about this very carefully. Answer it honestly. Don't worry about what people are going to think because nobody else is going to see this. I do want you to think about why. Take your time and answer this honestly. All right, guys, that's all we have time for today. Can I please have your sheets as you're leaving? Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. Well done today. Good job. Have a nice day. Thank you, Boomi. Thank you, John. Bye, chance. John, can I speak to you for a second? John, I think you misunderstood the assignment. Beth, I think you misunderstood life.
Okay, so let me get us off sharing. If I can, and it won't let me stop sharing. What I'd like you to now think about and reflect on. And then before we get to trust, let me see if I can stop sharing now. Okay, so, all right. Well, for some reason, I apologize, everyone. I don't know why it's not allowing me to stop share. I don't really want to go any further on the slides. Here's what I'd like you to do before we begin to even talk about culture or continue talking about culture or trust, what I'd like you to do is think about what we just watched. And reflect on the notion and, and the comment that you may have gotten from community members, from stakeholders on the topic of learning loss. And, and, and so when you think of and reflect on what students need beyond a formal education in the workplace with relationships and all that, when you speak with employers on what they desire, what they need in potential employees, I'd like you to think about what those responses would be. Because when we look at learning loss and we look at what would seem on the surface level as a learning loss, can we pivot from that position and look at the gain that our students, all of our students are now experiencing because of the pandemic? Now, I'm not suggesting that, that we don't look and, and, and look deeper at the potential learning losses. What I'd like us to look at is what is important in, in the bigger picture for a student, for all of us as adults, what is it that we search for? And is it, is it important to reflect on that why for all of us? To reflect on the why from your students' perspective from a very young age to be able to connect them to who they are, what it is they want and, and help them get there. So now it's, it's allowing me to stop share. I'm not sure what happened there. So reflections, reactions to that, that video quickly. You can share if you like. If you don't have anything to share, we can move on to trust, which is really the foundation of effective work, teamwork, governance, or really any other team. Trust is a major, major foundation. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, just regarding the video, I feel like I want to say that was a John Lennon quote that I heard some time back. And it, it really struck me in the fact that everybody as, as people, we all want the same things in life. Everybody really wants to feel, you know, cared for, respected. The student says happy. So everybody wants those same things in life. It's just a matter of how people approach them and how we are able to secure those in life. And I think, you know, you mentioned about our students and, and where they are and what they've overcome really over the last year. And I, I, I agree with you in the sense that, you know, we've had these learning challenges that have come up. But our students have, may not have learned according to our kind of conventional measurements of this is how, what you should learn by this time and this is how you should learn it. But they have learned these other skills that are going to propel them to success later in life. They've learned creativity, they've learned adaptability. So there are these other things that I think they've acquired throughout these challenges that they've, they've endured through the past year.
Couldn't agree with you more. Thank you.
Resiliency, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you for, for all of us. But I think that that's important to reflect on and to talk about and discuss because the notion out there that there is learning loss that in the past year, students have, have missed out. When you think about everything that they have gained and you mention them and, and, and you don't really have to think hard to be able to come up with them. What they have gained is tremendous. We may not see the results of what they have gained for some months or for the years to come, but it certainly has not been a, a loss as I look at education, as I speak with my colleagues. The other, the other, I guess, good or advantage of, of the crisis and the pandemic for folks in education has been to be creative and look at and really look at the needs of their students and come up with solutions that are sustainable. And, and having those difficult, crucial, critical conversations that we tend to shy away from, we have been forced to have those conversations. I was speaking with a friend of mine who is a superintendent in a small district. And he was sharing with me that at the beginning of the pandemic, when it became more evident and this is going to be more than just a couple of weeks, they had to really look at what their students need, what the students needed to be able to move forward. And the digital divide, that was a major concern. But rather than just providing hotspot for every student, they went one step further, they took it one step further and actually took desks from classrooms for students who didn't have work area or desk area. We take a lot for granted. We think that every student will have a workspace and workstation and, and a desk. And, and many don't, and that's the reality of it. So they made sure to, to take the desks that were just sitting in the classroom and deliver them to the, to the, to the homes. So when you think of leadership in times of crisis, it's really to take that step, one step further from, from managing the immediate need to think about what else could be needed. And so I thought what he shared was just simply brilliant. Any other reflection, reflection or reaction before we move on to trust, which is the glue, it's really the foundation? Go ahead, Juan.
Sure. If you were to ask me the question, what do you want to be when I grow up, like at age, like what, fourteen, with that kids, those kids were? I would have said, I want to be a famous DJ recording artist, right? But obviously, life experience changes you and you, you're retrospective about those things. So if you're to ask me that now, I want to be a catalyst for change who advocates for my community because they haven't been heard or haven't been serviced correctly, right? So you're, you craft your, what do you want to be when you grow up through experience? And I think those kinds of experiences are the things that we have been providing our kids. When you say learning loss, you're implying we took something from them. Right? So we didn't take anything from anyone. In fact, what we did is we provided these opportunities for that type of growth that I'm saying I'm trying to be an advocate for. Right? So I think we, it behooves us as a education system to stop putting it out there. Like, we didn't take anything from anyone. In fact, provided X, Y, Z opportunity in, in a way that could have never been imagined. And, and I think that's the message we need to be sending out to other governance boards, right? Like, don't go, don't go around saying the system failed these kids because what we did is we creatively took them to the next year. And now we have to figure out where we're going to go from there.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and then the, the perceptions that are out there, they do need to be responded to, right? Because when perceptions are not responded to, they become reality. So it's important, as uncomfortable as some of these discussions and conversations are, it's important to take the time, reflect and respond. Ryan, I see that you have unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I just want to, I agree a hundred percent with what Juan is saying, you know? I think that, you know, this whole concept of learning loss as a whole, I mean, we should really get it out of our vocabulary, you know? And, and, and really, this video resonated with me just because of the fact that you're talking about and asking them what do they want to be when they grow up? And they said happy in that sense. And that is what we need to be focusing on, you know what I mean? Like, because of the fact that there are a lot of our kids right now, like, you know, our teachers are doing the best that they can do, you know? But we also got to remember that learning all this stuff, it means nothing if the kid as a whole is not socially, emotionally like good and in a safe, healthy place, you know? And, and that is basically, I mean, that's what I've been thinking about a lot lately, like in regards to distance learning and everything like that. It's just the social emotional needs of our kids and, and whatnot, you know? So, yeah, education and everything like that, of course, you know, it's, it's very important, you know, I'm not saying that it's not. But the well-being of our students, especially their, their, like I said, their, their social emotional well-being, that is to be number one, you know, especially right now. So yeah, that, that, that's, yeah.
It should always be number one and the focus, right? And, and especially now, if you're familiar with the work of Dr. Barbara Fredrickson, she is a positive psychology or psychologist. And so she studies the brain, that, that's, that's the, the topic or the topic of, of her interest. And so based on her research, she has concluded that when the brain is in a happy place, when you're happy, the brain cells open up and you're open to suggestions and options and solutions. And so that needs to happen first because when you're happy and you're open to suggestions, to you're creative and all that, then the learning can happen. And so the, the focus on that and then your teachers are in the best position to be able to get the students to that level of, of happiness and engagement and, and openness to learning and, and awakening curiosity so they can ask questions. So the students want to learn. That's ideal, right? That's what we are hoping to do in every classroom. Any other reflections before we move on? And I'm looking at the time. I want to make sure I'm mindful of your time and we finish on time. So let me move on. I'm going to share my screen again. I want to get to and share with you a couple of slides on roles and responsibilities of the board. So if it's all right with you, I'm going to move along. And let's see, what I like to do is, let me see where I want to go. All right, here's where we are going to go. I may have shared this visual with you when I met with you a couple of years ago. So understanding roles and responsibilities of the board and the superintendent is critical. And this is just a refresher for all of you. When you look to the left and the what and the value-driven, I guess, component of, of this graphic, that's where the board member is coming. You are responsible for everything that's in the yellow plus what you see in the green. Okay, so the the role of the board is to make sure that the documents that you see in the yellow are are up to date, that you all share that vision and mission for your district, that you have proper policies in place to protect you and protect your students and lead you to student success and achievement and that you have your priorities in place. Strategic goals and successful indicators, everyone, all of you are responsible for. What you see on the right side is the how and it's the skill-driven component. That's where your superintendent and your 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 staff comes in, right? They come up with the action plans, implementation, evaluation components and they send you progress reports. So you can see if your goals are going to be met based on the direction you set for your district. When you move on to the five major responsibilities of the board, again, you set the direction for your district, establish the structure. And you always have that helicopter view of viewing your district from a much higher level and not getting into the weeds of day-to-day operation. In the next visual, we'll take a look at what that looks like. So creating a supportive environment, ensuring accountability, when you think of accountability, there are two major components. One is your superintendent's evaluation. And the second, that's equally important, is your board self-evaluation. And I'm not sure if we have had conversation on that or not. But if you hold your superintendent accountable, it's only fair that you also hold yourself accountable. And also the last responsibility listed here, demonstrating community leadership. Let's look at this next visual. So the essential roles in school district, there are three major roles, if you look at the pyramid. The governance team being the strategic visionary role, you're the big picture leadership. Along with your superintendent, you as the board, you set the direction and you set your priorities and your goals and mission and vision for your district. The middle part, administration, is the tactical role. It's the planning, the logistics. And and then when you look at the bottom part, the the teachers and staff that have the operational role, day-to-day implementation. That's all of your teachers and your staff. Anytime you, as the board, move into the administration, move into tactical or operational role, you're micromanaging. And so it's really important to be mindful of that. We spoke about the importance of open and honest conversations. And it's very nice to hear that you feel that is happening in your district and with your superintendent, with the timely communication. This is some, this is just, it's a list of collaborative communications. And so I I let you take a look at that. And then again, the board self-evaluation that I mentioned is the last item on this slide. And so being an effective trustee, this is something, all of you have been in the district at least since 2018, if I recall right. So you're very familiar with what it means to be an effective trustee, knowing the documents, you need to know the policies, being prepared for meetings and from basic knowledge of your district to knowing the policies, the protocols and and processes of how you decide things are done in your district. This next quote is from a book that I recommend to all of you highly. If you don't have it, it's a great book to have and perhaps share and maybe have your own book club, governance book club. The Governance Core was written by Davis Campbell and Michael Phoehn, names that may be familiar to you. And basically, this quote says, governance is not just passing policies, it is what boards and superintendents do together and how they do it. When we spoke and then we talked about the behaviors and how you treat each other and how that is important and how that really contributes to student learning and achievement. This quote quote seemed very appropriate. So I looked at your governance handbook and I see that you have, two years ago when we met, you put together a list of processes and protocols, meeting guidelines. And why you're important is because all of you need to be operating from the same set of rules. And that's why you come together. These documents need to, as you come together, the documents need to be revisited. They need to be revised. You may decide you need to add or take something out. Sometimes as as a new board, you come up with protocols that make sense for you as a newly formed board. But as you go on, those protocols need to be revisited. Let's take a look at a very meaningful quote by Josh Ship. Every kid is one caring adult away from being a success story. And all of you on this call, all the government, the members of your governance team are in the position to create success stories. Let's look at this visual. And so I know the conversation on equity and inclusion is one that has been a topic for the past, I would say, four, five, six months. But it's something that is not new and it's something that really needs everyone's attention. These are the critical, crucial conversations I was referring to. And every school district that I've had the pleasure of of working with has their own set of conversations and programs and initiatives to really begin to remove the barriers. So then we are really serving each and every child because we can't just say we serve all children. We have to show that in action. This was a video that I will, maybe a different time, we'll have time for it and I will show it to you. But this quote by Stephen Covey, maintaining the focus is really critical and it's really simple, right? I mean, he says it so simply, the main thing is to keep the main thing, the main thing. And for all of you, being in education, serving on the board of, serving on the governance team, the main thing is to make sure your students are learning or growing in a nurturing atmosphere and 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 to ensure their success and completion of their elementary education with you. And again, lessons that go beyond the classroom, lessons that they're they're all going to need as they enter the world, the real world and and the work environments. So with that, I asked you to reflect on your why. Why are you a part of this team? And and I'd like us to spend the remaining time that we have together on reflecting on your why, sharing it with your colleagues. It may not be something new and and if the cabinet members would like to join in, I would like for you to share as well on your why. Why are you a part of this governance team? And you can go ahead and unmute and begin. Dr. Downing, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll start things off. My why is simply, I believe all children deserve the best education possible, no matter where they come from. They deserve that. And I feel like it's the role of education to provide that equity and access. It's a moral imperative. And being a part of this great district, I think allows us all to provide that opportunity for every single child in Anaheim.
Thank you. And moral imperative is something that that in the book Governance Core is referred to quite a bit. I don't know if you have read that book, but it's it's really a good book to to pick up. All right, thank you, Dr. Downing. Go ahead, Juan.
Okay, I guess you could say my why stems from my experience as a child in this environment that we are in. And knowing that there weren't very many people looking out for a family like mine, an immigrant family in a poor neighborhood. Yes, we were afforded an education. Yes, we went to public schools. Yes, I turned out, I would say, successful, I guess, to some degree, right? But there wasn't anybody in place that I could recall whose whose purpose was to make sure that everything was done for me equitably, right? So I feel like that's my why. My why is I'm a person in my neighborhood space that can look out for that family that's like mine. And I can provide this perspective of understanding their life experience so that I can then help the district guide the best practice towards creating a better opportunity. I'm not saying it's the the best or it's going to be better than mine or whatever, right? Just something more than what I was afforded because no one was looking out for me or my family specifically, right? So I think that's kind of where I'm coming from, just being able to provide opportunities to families that maybe sometimes are forgotten or aren't thought of.
Thank you.
My why, my why is all grounded from love, from love for this community. These are the students that attend the schools in my trustee area, they're friends I've had since high school, since elementary school, since like, I'm I'm doing this because I know in Anaheim, there's a lot of politicians, right? I consider myself a public servant, right? I'm I, that's my why is because I know if it's, you know, not me, I know it's going to be somebody who wants to get into higher office. That's just the history of this city and politics. I have been given the opportunity to go to the university to find the tools necessary to make positive change. I didn't have the best education growing up. And I know that the systemic issues and reasons why, as I've reflected throughout my career in academia and education. And with that knowledge, it's me giving back. That's my why. I'm doing this because I'm giving back to my community. I'm giving back to help my families and my homies and their kids get the best education. That's my why. It's because I love them. And yeah.
Thank you. A why that's grounded in love. That's fantastic. Thank you. Jackie, go ahead.
It's kind of simple. I mean, I've been in this community for sixty years. And I love this district because I attended this district and my children did. But I think it comes down to something kind of simple because people made a difference for me. And I just wanted to have the opportunity to make a difference for others, especially children that I love. I love our community children and but also in areas, seniors, I love the seniors in this community. And I just felt that whether it's helping to govern a school district of thousands of students or helping, you know, at the community center on Thursday to deliver food to a senior, it's my community. So my why is just, it's a part of me since I was a little girl. And I think we all need to sort of look for ways that we can make those differences because they're there even in the smallest ways. So and and just also simply because it gives me joy. It it just really keeps my life full. And I have always said, I want to see all of the children now have some of the wonderful things that that my kids had. And it, I just, I guess I go back to, since I started volunteering many years ago, it gave me joy. And when you get to see the small ways you make a difference, that's even more joy. So just to serve, it's it's what I like to do. So there's, there's my why.
Thank you. Jackie, so incredible that you have been in that community, in your community of Anaheim for sixty years. Did I hear that? I mean, that's incredible. Very few people stay and serve in the area that they they grew up. What a blessing. Thank you. And and you're you're muted, Jackie.
I'm sorry, it was muted. I said, if anybody's doing the math, yes, I moved here when I was three. Started kindergarten at Palm Lane. And, you know, so yes, been here a long time. But the wonder of that is that I've seen a lot too. And there's even people in this community now that are still here that were teachers to my children. And as I grew older, I saw even more so what they, you know, contributed. And there, some of my teachers are still in Anaheim, which is part of the reason I'm involved in things like the YMCA because of Mr. Alden Esping, who was one of my teachers in junior high. And he's always been great in the YMCA. So you just, it kind of comes, what goes around comes around is another reason that, that's my why, what goes around comes around. At least it's better because that's how we all. That's how we all get to to be successful and be happy and you have to bring others with you. You just have to bring them with you. Even sometimes if they're kicking and screaming, you, you know, you bring you bring them with you. So.
Ryan, go ahead. Thank you for reading.
So I am also a lifelong Anaheim resident, not sixty years. But I did go to school in the Anaheim Elementary School District and I'm a product of this district. I'm a product of the Anaheim Union High School District. And, you know, what's interesting about it is when I was growing up, and I don't know if this was the case over at Luera High School where Dr. McCollus went, but I went to Catella High School. You know, a lot of people used to call it Anna crime, Anna crime, you know, and I'm getting out of here, I'm leaving, I'm leaving. And that was almost became like a sign of success as I left the city. And I always thought to myself like, well, that's kind of crap. Like, why, why would you think that that's a sign of success? You should want to give back to your city and make it better and work together to improve it, you know? And I was given an opportunity through education to achieve achieve that, to go to college and 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 to get my credential to become a teacher. And I moved back because of the fact that I love our community. And I want our students to realize that they come from a great community and to be proud of that. And to really be proud of the schools that they attend and be proud of the neighborhoods that they live. And if they're not, think about how can I be equipped with skills needed to make that positive change in the future when I grow up, you know? And and I think that by just providing our kids with the endless vast amount of opportunities that we do, we're definitely accomplishing a lot of, a lot of the whole reason why I even joined this board in 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 twenty fourteen, you know? So, yeah.
And may I add that you're all inspiring the next generation of school board members who are probably sitting at home, attending classes online and thinking, one day I'm going to be like board member or trustee so-and-so or like Dr. Downing. And so that is such a good place to be. And and I acknowledge your commitment to being in your area, in your neighborhood that you grew up in and giving back and serving your stakeholders and then your families. Any reflections from our wonderful cabinet members? I want to make sure that I don't exclude you. You have taken the time to be here this evening. I appreciate it as your facilitator. If you have anything to share, try to go ahead.
Yeah, I'll 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 go as far as my why. I, you know, I think for me, it's my commitment to really contribute to the betterment of our future. And honestly, I can't think of a better way to do that than to support the young people, you know, in our communities. And so as I reflect on my career, you know, sometimes you know, sometimes that's been direct support to students, but sometimes it's been support to staff members who are working with our students. And I think in any of those roles, it's just the focus on making sure that I'm a resource and that I'm contributing in a positive way to support them to be whoever they want to be in this world. So.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay, I'll go. Mine is going to mimic some that you've already heard, but I'm from this district as well. I grew up here, I was born here, raised here, and don't know anything negative about my time in Anaheim City School District at the time. I have all good memories, and this is the only place I thought of coming back to when I moved back to California. And in my current position, I'm here because when we talk about everybody needing supports and everybody feeling valued, that includes employees. And I think sometimes we forget that. To make students happy and students supported, our employees need to feel that way as well. So giving them a voice too.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. You need a happy village, right, to be able to serve the villagers? Go ahead. Is it Jesus?
Yeah.
Maria, go ahead.
Yeah, my why, it's, you know, like board trustee, relas and Alvarez shared, kind of, they kind of reaffirm my why. Because I came to this country as an English learner, came here nine years old. And there were a lot of friends that didn't make it, you know, past high school. And I made it. And I've always seen education as the great equalizer, right? And so I always have made my why, you know, to provide every student with the opportunity of a good life, like it was mentioned in the, in the quote. And the only way we can do that is by providing access to an excellent educational experience. In every, you know, in all the positions I held, from teacher to vice principal, principal, now in the role of assistant soup of business service or administrative services, I look for ways to use those fiscal resources and everything to provide that for them. Because what I really want to happen is when they're adults, to have options and opportunities and not to question that, hey, I never got that chance because I was never provided, you know, the, the, the education that I needed to put me in a situation where there are various doors that I can open. And I always said that to my students. My job is to provide you with as many doors for you to enter through if you choose to, right? And not limit the opportunities that you may have. So that is my why.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your why. And isn't that the reason for education? Is to allow students to explore and figure out who they are, reflect on their own why, and then having an action plan of how you're going to get to their desired future. Thank you for sharing. So I see that it's actually, we have gone four minutes after seven. I do apologize. I did promise you we'll stay on time. And if, I don't see President Lopez on the, on my screen. I don't know if he's still there, or I'm just not seeing him.
He's here.
Okay, okay. There you are. All right. So again, thank you for allowing me to be part of your governance workshop. And I hope to have the opportunity to work with you again. Hopefully, next time in person. Hopefully, I can just drive to Anaheim and be with all of you. Any last minute questions, comments, reflections? Anything that you'd like to share? Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, I hope so too, mainly because of the fact that I think that you've never visited our actual boardroom. You saw us last time when we were out over in Orange Grove, and now we're virtual. We do have a district office where we have a boardroom there, an official one. So hopefully, yes, it, it will be under better circumstances. The, the second question I had, it was in regards to, you mentioned the, the board kind of reflection. I don't know when the last time we did that.
Oh, the board self-evaluation?
Self-evaluation, yeah.
So that is usually, I recommend it, I recommend it annually. So once a year, during your dark month, depending on where dark month is. When I served on board, I'm a former board member. July was our dark month. And that's when we revised, we revised the handbook, looked at our protocols. We also did the board self-evaluation. There are many tools out there you can use. CSBA has one that, that's extremely simple and user-friendly. I can certainly send information to your, to your EA, which, by the way, I forgot to thank her, Chantel. You already know, I don't have to tell you. She's fantastic. And you know that the executive assistants are the glue that hold the districts together. So I just had to make sure I, I mentioned her because she's fabulous. I can send her more information on that. But it's an online tool. You each take that individually, and then you get the results. Once you have the results, you can either analyze the results on your own, and your board president can certainly facilitate, or you can have me back or a facilitator to come and help analyze the, the results and look at the areas that perhaps you need to work on. So the board self-evaluation, very important. Thank you. Thank you for, for asking.
Great, thank you.
My pleasure.
Pete, thank you very much for your rotation of this again. Just real quick, where do we turn in our surveys or feedback?
Um, you can, you can email them to me directly or send them to Chantel. And then she can compile and send them to me. That's okay too.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sepeda.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support of our board in our district.
You are such a pleasure to work with. Everything that you're doing is incredible. Continue and just stay safe and healthy. And I hope to see you all in person, in your boardroom. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right, thank you, Sepeda.
My pleasure.
Moving on, item four, our adjournment. I would like to thank everybody for attending. Thank you for your participation. Our next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, February 10th. There be no further business before the board. I adjourned this meeting at 7:08 PM. Thank you again, everyone. Have a great night and be safe.
Good night, everybody. Good night.